All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Transportation Policy and Planning Board meeting for January 31st, 2022. We do appear to have a quorum, so we'll call the meeting to order. Riva, if you would please call the roll.
Badger, ask Mike Hala.
Here.
Barbara Harrington McKinney. Barbara Harrington McKinney. Carolyn McAndrews.
Present.
Christopher McAhill.
Here.
Grant Foster.
Here.
Keith Furman.
Present.
Margaret Bergamini.
Here.
Randy Udell.
Here.
And Tom Wilson.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Thank you, Riva. Jesse, if you then please proceed with our standard virtual meetings opening statement.
Great. Welcome to our Transportation Policy and Planning Board virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking on the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you're able, please activate your video for the purposes of quorum and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. While panelists, that is Alders, committee members and staff have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the board, please send it to the email listed in today's agenda. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Jesse. Just a reminder, we have one vacancy and the Baltasar will not be here tonight. So Margaret, both you and Badri will be in voting status for the duration of the meeting. All right, then on to approval of minutes from the January 10th, 2022 meeting. Assuming all board members have had a chance to review those, if they so chose, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Badri, thank you. Is there a second? Raelde Furman, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor of approving our meeting minutes from January 10th, 2022, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Pose no. Chair, please, unanimous, if you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will go on as unanimous. Thank you. Do we have any registrations for public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Are there any communications, disclosures, or recusals from members of the board? Seeing none. Our first item, Legistar 69500, Statement of Interest. Just another reminder, if you've not filled out the Statement of Interest form, please, and submitted it, please do so. It is a requirement for serving on boards, commissions, and committees. Any questions or comments about that? Okay, seeing none. Next item, another reminder, Legistar 69501, Transformative Leadership Education Training. Should have received an email, I think I got mine on Thursday, the 27th, for that. That is a diversity, equity, and social justice training being put on by Urban Triage for board, commission, and committee members. So if you have interest in availability, feel free to register for those trainings. Any questions or comments about that item? Alder Furman, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair. I was wondering, are they going to be recorded? I can make most of them, but there's one, possibly two, I can't. So I was wondering how that would work.
Ooh, that's a good question. I don't know. I will check on that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anne, go ahead. But before I, actually, before you go, Anne, any objections still allowing Anne Kovac, TC Chair, to ask questions and comment on any of our items this evening? Seeing none, go ahead, Anne.
Thanks, Tom. Please let us know for sure, Tom Lynch. My understanding is that they're not going to be recorded, but we've asked Urban Triage to prepare summaries of each of them, Alder Furman, so that if you happen to miss one, there should be a summary prepared and sent out to people.
Thank you, Anne. Appreciate that. All right, any further comments or questions on that item? Please tune into those if you do have time. All right, our next item then is Legistar 67564, Metro Transit Network redesign draft plan.
Thanks. So a brief introduction, my name is Mike Chekvalas. As many of you know, I'm a, work for the Transportation Department. We've been working on the Transit Network redesign, which is a three-stage process. The first stage was an analysis of existing conditions. The second step was the alternatives report, where we showed the ridership and coverage alternatives and asked you to help us with some direction on devising a draft plan. And step three, which is, which we're working on now, is the draft plan. So our consultants from Jarrett Walker and Associates, Daniel Costantino, will have some more information. And so I'll turn it over to him. Daniel, are you on?
I am on. Thanks, Mike. I'm going to share my screen with my presentation. Is that appearing in front of everyone? Yep. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, members of the board tonight. So what are we doing here? This is about the Metro Transit Network redesign, which, just as a quick reminder, is about where and how often the bus should be operating in Madison in future. Over the end of the summer, beginning of the fall, this project presented two contrasting alternatives to the public for comment, for how that could look like. One of those alternatives was called the Ridership Alternative. And in that one, we showed what the bus network could look like if all of the service was really focused on the most main streets, the places where the most people go. And we provided service as frequently as possible in those places, but in those places only. So service to significantly fewer locations than are served at the moment. In contrast, we also proposed the, also showed the coverage alternative, which would be a little bit more like the service that Metro Transit has run historically in that it spreads service out to as many places as possible. Both those alternatives took into account the BRT project that is happening concurrently to this project. And we asked people what they thought and whether they thought either of these would be better than what exists right now or, and whether they thought that one of these was better than the other. And in response to what we heard, TPPB gave us direction to develop a draft plan for a future network, a single draft plan that would be the proposal. And this plan, based on the direction we got, was to be based largely on the Ridership Alternative, but with some changes, so that we could extend coverage to a few more areas, even understanding that that might mean that some of the frequency and travel time gains from the Ridership Alternative would be lost by extending that coverage out to more places where it seemed important to get service. So that's what we've worked on. And today, we have a draft plan to present to you. And we're seeking the board's approval to release it for public comment over the next couple of months. So just the very big picture of what this looks like, here, you've seen this map before. This is the existing network map. As a reminder, color on this map means frequency. So if you see lines, their color means how often the bus comes on weekdays in the middle of the day. Red lines are buses that come frequently, every 15 minutes or better. Darker blue, every 30 minutes, lighter blue, every hour. And then in the sort of gold color, there are buses that just come a few times a day, maybe just a peak hours or sometimes just in the evening or things like that. So that gives you an idea of what the current network looks like. You can see, as I said earlier, that it's a network that's rather extensive geographically and it spreads relatively small amounts of service to almost all of Madison. Sometimes that service isn't very frequent. Sometimes in outlying areas, it's only providing service in one direction on a given street, on these long one-way loops. But there is service to a lot of places. And this network revolves, as it has for the last 20 years or so, around these transfer points to the north, south, east, and west. So if you live closer in than the transfer points, the bus service near you is probably going to UW and/or Downtown through the Isthmus and then to another transfer point on the other side of town. If you live outside of those transfer points, the bus is most likely taking you to the transfer point where you'll have to change bus to go wherever it is you may be going. So that's how the network has operated historically. And next, I'm going to show you what the draft plan looks like. And then I'm going to go back and forth a couple of times, and then I'll talk about the draft plan for a second. So here's the draft plan. Same colors, red means every 15 minutes or better. The darker blue means every 30 minutes, lighter blue means every 60. And if you see this sort of gray gold, that is a kind of a peak-only type service. So there's the draft plan, existing service, draft plan, existing service, draft plan. And so in some ways, this draft plan is similar to the Ridership Alternative in that indeed, you can see immediately that there are fewer lines on this map and that more of those lines are red, meaning service every 15 minutes or better, a lot more. And that fewer, far fewer of these lines are blue or gold, meaning service once an hour or just a peak. So I'm going to take you through kind of what this means more broadly and then show you some of the outcomes. And then I'm happy to take any of your questions for as long as we need to. So what's in the draft network? The first thing that's key to understanding is that the network assumes that the BRT project is happening in some form. In particular, it assumes that the East-West BRT, which has been in planning for longer than this project's been going on, is moving forward. And that East-West BRT is in fact Route A in the plan. It's a frequent route and we are assuming that the stations will be where they are. The draft plan also assumes that there will be a North-South BRT. The draft plan proposes a path for the North-South BRT along what we're calling Route B, but that's not necessarily the final word on that path. And we also assume that there will be a BRT to Middleton, although we assume that service will be less frequent than the other BRTs. We do also propose a path for it, and that one is Route F in the plan. Next thing to know, this plan assumes that service will return to 2019 levels, to pre-COVID levels. And we're assuming that that's true by the middle of 2023. And that matches the operating funds that are available to Metro Transit. What that means then is that there will be more service than has been running during the pandemic, but not more service than Madison has historically run. And within that budget that we understand to be what's available, there is an infinite room to go more places or to provide more frequent service. We have certain limits, and that's why we're dealing with trade-offs and why we presented things like the contrasting Ridership and Coverage Alternatives to say that you can do more of A or more of B, but you can't do more of both at the same time, not within this fixed budget at least. So the consequence of that is that in comparing what's happening in the existing network versus what might happen in a future network, you have to remember that any decision in the proposed map to run more service in one place or on one line is a decision to run less service in some other place and on some other line. But with that said, the big picture of this proposal, the first most important thing is that this proposal would make service more frequent in large parts of Madison. So in the existing network, which is shown here on this map, most routes run every 30 minutes. Many routes, particularly in outlying areas beyond the transfer points, only run once an hour. And also, in many of those outlying routes, areas, whether the routes are running every 30 or every 60 minutes, they only run one way down a particular street. So there are long one-way loops, which means that ultimately, that bus really is useful at getting you to the transfer point, but not at kind of getting you there and back, or maybe in one direction, you'll have to take much longer trip than any other. So this is in contrast to what's in the draft plan. In the draft plan, about half of the routes would run every 15 minutes on weekdays and half would run about every 30 minutes. There's still a couple more, less frequent routes that we put out there to try to get to some places that are a little bit harder to reach. But for the most part, service would be significantly more frequent. And in particular, not only would it be more frequent, we also avoided as much as possible putting any service on one-way loops, such that if you're on a street and there is a bus there, you can take the bus in one direction on one side of the street and know that you'll come back on the same bus to the same street at a stop across the street. So more frequent service, more, more two-way service. We're also looking at more direct service in this plan. As I said earlier, in existing service, passengers who are coming from areas farther out than the transfer points or who are going there have to go through the transfer points. So ultimately, if you are in an outlying area or a peripheral area of Madison at the moment, it almost doesn't matter where you're going. If you're taking the bus, you're going to that transfer point, getting on another bus, and going to that other place, even if you have to go somewhat out of direction to get to that transfer point. If you're not within it, you're a lot less likely to have to, if you're not in an outlying area, you're a lot less likely to have to transfer. In the draft plan, we're proposing that most routes would in fact be going to and through downtown. So all the routes that I've highlighted in green here are routes that go all the way from their terminus to downtown. And all but one of the routes that I've highlighted in green not only go to downtown, but come out on the other side, going further out. So for example, following Route B here, which starts in Fitchburg, on Fish Hatchery Road. Route B, as I said earlier, is the, our proposal for the routing that might eventually become the North-South BRT. So it starts at Fish Hatchery Road, goes up Fish Hatchery to Badger, down Badger, up Park, all the way into town, out the Isthmus, up to North Street, and then North Street, Packers Avenue, into the North Side, along Northport, Troy, et cetera, all the way to its end in the North Side. And that's the way that each of the routes in this plan has been designed. A couple of the routes would do this only in the daytime. Those are the ones that I've indicated in yellow here, and in the evening, they would have a transfer. But far more people would live within a one-seat ride of downtown or a one-seat ride of a place they need to go across town than do today. A consequence of having more frequent service, of course, while operating in the same budget, is that service would be on fewer streets. So you undoubtedly saw that there were fewer lines, and that means fewer, that means fewer streets where there are bus stops. However, despite this, the vast majority of people near service today would remain near service under this draft plan. The average walk to service would get a little bit longer, and I'll give them a little bit more detail about this further down in the presentation. But basically, about 70% of people would be the same distance from bus stop they are right now. And then the median change in walk distance to a bus stop would be about 300 feet, which is the length of a short block downtown. Of course, if we're putting service on fewer streets, it becomes even more important than it always is to make sure that we're putting it in the right places. And we did that looking at general measures of demand. How many people, how many places are there in a given area, where are they connecting to? But we also looked at it specifically with reference to disadvantaged populations, people of color, low-income people, and other groups. And what I'm showing you here is a map of the density of low-income people in Madison. Those are the shades of purple. The darker the purple, the more low-income people live in this area, according to the Census American Community Survey. And overlaid on that, you see colored lines, which are again, the map, the lines in this draft plan and how often they come. And you can see that we targeted the service and the lines that we drew to make sure that we would keep service as close as possible to as many low-income people as possible. And not just in inner areas, but also in peripheral areas of Madison, be they south, north, southwest, or east. We also didn't just look at where low-income people live, we looked at a variety of places where they go, and that includes their jobs. But what I'm showing you here is a map specifically of low- and mid-cost grocery stores. And that was a big topic actually during the network design, making sure that we were continuing to go to all of these places, because these are places where people need to go, and people need to go to them relatively regularly. And not only that, places where there are grocery stores tend to be places where there are a lot of other vital services that people need often. And so that was another item that we paid attention to over the course of the design to make sure that we're designing not just for demand, but also with equity in mind. We also designed the service in this draft plan, keeping in mind patterns of development, historical, but also ongoing and recent developments. So what you see here is a map that's been added to the presentation since it was put up on Legistar. This map, prepared by city staff, shows you purple dots, which are infill development from the last five years. Green and, green and blue dots, which are greenfield development at the edges of the city. You can see these, kind of, these buffers that follow the more frequent routes in the network. So you see there's this orange buffer that follows the Route A, East-West BRT, this green buffer that follows the Route B, and this blue buffer that follows the other services every 15 minutes. And what you can see if you look at that then is that the frequent network that's been designed here really is intended to match the patterns of infill development that have taken place so far and hopefully to anticipate or provide some direction to infill development that may be happening in future. Here now, go a little bit further into this. I've added in the lines with the same colors that you saw earlier, with service. Again, red, frequent service, every 15 or better, blue, every 30, light blue, every 60. And the point, the point that I wanted to make here is that the full network also continues to go out throughout the whole area that's developed today and will hit some of the recent greenfield development that has happened. Mostly, it hits greenfield development that has happened in places that were already developed a fair bit, you know, five, 10 years ago, like say out here around Cottage Grove and Milwaukee. And so now you're getting to areas that used to be sparsely developed and are now basically urbanized. This plan doesn't yet propose going out to some of the extremely new development on the far west side, where the development is still pretty haphazard from one place to another. And so to the extent that we're trying to concentrate service and make it the most useful possible, we had not yet gone out there. Should also point out, this is also a response to public input, where the understanding that we've had from both surveys so far is that service to brand-new outlying development should be among our lower priorities. But anyway, this shows you how that interacts. In the rest of this presentation, I'm going to focus on a couple key outcomes in terms of the service itself and how the service, how the service relates to people in Madison. The first one that I want to talk about is proximity. Proximity is something that we measure, that's just what percentage of people are near transit now and what percentage would be near transit under this plan in future. Knowing this doesn't tell us that the service is useful per se, but it tells us that people have access to something and so they have at very least a basic level of insurance against isolation. If, and of course, note that this is about weekdays in the middle of the day. We do have plans for how much service would be there in the evenings and weekends. And in most places, that's about half of the frequencies that you would see in the, on weekdays. But I can go into more detail about that if there are any questions after the presentation. In any case, here right now is a chart that's showing you how many people are within one-quarter mile of a bus stop, one-quarter mile walk along the street network of a bus stop in Madison. And so you can see that there's about 80% of people who are within a quarter mile of a bus stop right now. But only 11% of those people are near a bus stop where service comes every 15 minutes or better on any particular route. Under the draft plan, the total number of people near a bus stop would go down. So if you look specifically at all day service, you can see that we're going from 79% of people near service to 73. That's that blue column in the middle. But if you pay attention to the red column on the left, which is frequent service, you can see that that would go from 11% to 42%. So we would be quadrupling the number of people near service every 15 minutes or better, which is the type of frequency at which you start to be able to just kind of turn up anytime and the bus is going to come soon, rather than having to consult a schedule. So it is a lot more people near service that's a lot more likely to be convenient spontaneously and for many trips. That's for the population as a whole, but I also want to show you how this impacts specifically low-income populations and people of color. For low-income people, we're going to, from a situation where today about 90% of people are within a quarter mile of a service to about just over 85%. So a slight reduction, about 5%, similar to the population as a whole. In terms of proximity to frequent service though, we're going from 32% of low-income people near frequent service. And the vast majority and the vast majority of those being students on the UW or very near the UW campus, to 65% of low-income residents in Madison near frequent service, and a much broader range of which low-income residents we are actually talking about. In terms of people of color, outcomes kind of pretty similar to the population as a whole, where again, you're looking at about 80% of people near service today within a quarter mile. So, and then the all-day from 79 to 73, exactly like in the general population. And then people of color near frequent service right now, you see it's about 15%. That's slightly higher than the general population. I think that is driven by the location of that frequent service again, being right near the UW campus. And then going from 15% to 40% of the population of color being near frequent service. So 42 in the general population, 40 people of color, pretty comparable numbers. So that's in terms of whether people are close to service. The next thing to know though is whether that service is useful to get it to go anywhere. And that's why we measure access within 45 minutes. So what I'm going to show you is similar to what I showed you during the alternatives phase. There are maps that show you how many more or fewer jobs people could get to within 45 minutes door-to-door. So when we say that people can get to them in 45 minutes, we're including the amount of time they're going to have to walk to a bus stop, or how much time they may have to wait, if they have to transfer, how much time they have to walk all the way to their destination. And we use 45 minutes because you can drive from the very tip of Madison at one end to the very tip at the other end in 45 minutes, most of the time in most traffic conditions. So if it takes longer than that, there's reason to think that, you know, this is a pretty slow way to get around. It may not be that useful to most people. And we look at jobs specifically, just to make sure this gets said, not because transit is necessarily about commuting, but a lot of the places people go to are people, are places where there are jobs located. So if you go to retail, you go to a bank, you go to all sorts of services, most of those are places of employment. So knowing if you can access more jobs gets us an idea more generally about whether you can access more places with useful things to do. So here is the first version of this map. So this map shows you in green, if this is a location where the number of jobs reachable within 45 minutes would increase. And it shows it in pink if it's a location where that number of jobs would decrease. And the darker the shade, the more true that is, the more intense that is. So the very dark areas, we're looking at increases of more than 15,000 jobs within 45 minutes compared to existing service running today. And, you know, in the pink, same thing, the gradation tells you how bad it is in the pink. So this tells you how the impacts look like by area. What this doesn't tell you is how many people are actually affected. We're, and so, but we do have census data that gives us an estimate of how many people are in each one of these hexagonal areas. And so here is how that looks like with reference to the population of Madison and surrounding communities you can see on this map. So every dot on this map represents five residents of Madison, and their color represents whether things are getting better or worse for them in terms of how many jobs the transit network can get them to in 45 minutes or less. And so what we get out of this is an estimate that the median resident of Madison would actually see an 80% increase in the number of jobs they could reach within 45 minutes if this draft plan were implemented compared to the service that's out there today. It's not a universal improvement, you can see that there are some pink dots there, but for most people, it is a very significant improvement. In fact, it's approaching 90% of people who would see, who would be on the green end of this. So that's for the population as a whole. We also mapped this out for low-income people and people of color. So here is a map that shows you how this would impact people of color. On this map, one dot is one person who identifies as something other than white, according to the American Community Survey. And so you can see that, again, the vast majority of these dots are green. You can see that, you know, people of color are concentrated in certain areas. And most of the areas where they're concentrated would get an improvement in access. And as a result, the average improvement for people of color is essentially the same scale as it would be for the population as a whole. Here is the map as it relates to low-income people. As with people of color, this map shows one dot for one low-income person. And so similarly, you can see that the vast majority of these dots are green and not pink, although some are pink. You can also see that the degree of change is slightly less than for the population as a whole. And to some extent, that is because the low-income population is really concentrated in these more central areas, particularly around the University of Washington. And so those are already the areas that have the highest degree of access by transit right now. And to some extent, we never want to measure just low-income population in Madison, because so much of the population in that area is what you might think of as being temporarily low-income. Not true of everyone, but true of a lot of students, versus people who live in areas where low-income is perhaps more of a generational condition, which might be more true in outlying neighborhoods. So in summary, the draft network plan would make transit a lot more frequent and a lot more direct, particularly from outlying areas. The price to pay for that, since there isn't additional budget to make this happen, is that a number of people would have to walk farther to get to the closest bus stop. And on this map, I'm showing you in green people who would be closer to a bus stop than they are today. An all, a bus stop with all-day service, I should say. And in pink, the people who would be farther from one than they are today. And to give you a sense of scale on this, about 20% of the population of the city of Madison would be more than an eighth of a mile farther than they are right now to all-day service. About 8% would be closer, and 72% would be the same distance. We ran some quick analysis on how this fits with boardings, and preliminarily, it looks like about 5% of the boardings on the system would be at stops that, where people would just have to walk farther to get to transit. 95% would be at similar bus stops. So that's the big price, more frequent and more direct service, but some people have to walk farther to get to a bus stop. Now, most of the people in Madison, including most of the people who are farther from a bus stop, the bus stop that they would go to would have more frequent service. So what you see on this map is in green, people whose bus stop gets more frequent service. In gray, where frequency doesn't change. And in pink, where, well, maybe frequency changes or doesn't, but it doesn't matter because they're more than a half mile away, or it matters less because it's farther. So you can see that a lot of people have to walk farther. Most people are still near more frequent service. And so the end result is this, what we were showing you earlier. More frequency, but some longer walks. Overall, for 90% of people in Madison amounts to being able to get to more jobs within 45 minutes or less. So the next steps that we have at this point, if the board chooses to approve moving forward today, the project will begin another round of public outreach to see what people think about the draft plan and how it should change before it can become a final plan. We certainly don't want to say that this plan is perfect. There's always going to be things that, you know, need to be changed, need to evolve. You know, it is, designing a transit network is inherently a conversation. And so we're very interested to hear what the public has to say. And so really, we're going to be interested in knowing particularly whether the draft plan makes things better for people, for themselves, for the broader community, and also if there's very specific things that we've missed. And we're really relying on the feedback we get from that to understand what we got right, what still needs to change, and how we can get a final plan that meets the needs and values of the community, and that you as a board are going to feel comfortable approving when we get there. So, so here's we are in the broader process. We've gotten through the first two phases. First phase, choices report and general priorities. Second phase, alternatives. And we're now at the point where we have a draft plan, and we're asking the public whether we got it right. We're going to move on from there, once we have comments and perhaps more direction from this board, depending on how many comments they are, whether there are policy questions remaining. We'll get to a recommended plan, and we hope to have a plan in sometime in the late spring. So thanks for your time today. Happy to answer any questions. This is the rest of the project team, and we hope you'll approve moving forward.
All right, thank you, Daniel. We did have a number of public comment registrants, none of them wishing to speak. I'll just read them off briefly here. Laura Green in oppose, not wishing to speak. Ulrika DeTirle, I hope I pronounced that properly. Neither in support or opposition, not wishing to speak. Orion Tabor in support, not wishing to speak. Beth Sles in opposition, not wishing to speak. And DA Kester in opposition, not wishing to speak. We also had a number of written comments, and some of those, some of the authors of those comments are, there's some crossover with some of the names that I mentioned here, hopefully had a chance to review those. Are there any new registrants that I might not have seen, Riva, since the meeting started? I'm going to, okay, thank you. No worries. All right, questions, comments, discussion? Margaret, go ahead, please.
Yeah, just housekeeping, or more than housekeeping. For those registrants you just read off, could you possibly list off their address or at least their street names, so we get a sense if they're clustering in particular neighborhoods?
Yes, I can do that. So Laura Green on Belt Street in opposition. Ulrika DeTirle, Black Hawk Avenue, neither in support or opposition. Ryan Tabor, Dempsey in support. Beth Sles, Nova Way, opposition. DA Kester, Winchester Street, opposition. And then, let's see, I can bring up the, give me a moment here to bring up the other comments. One from the Catholic Multicultural Center on Belt Street. It's going to be south side. Also duplicate. Erie Court. And I think this is an opposition. We have another one, Ale Street, A-L-E, I'm not sure I pronounced that correctly. Is in support. And another duplicate. Hi, Riva.
We do have one more person that does want to speak, and his name is Adam.
Okay, let's go to Adam then, before we continue discussion. Go ahead, Adam, you have three minutes.
Sure, there's, there's no person in attendance that matches, matches that information that was provided.
Okay. Well, we'll see if we can figure that out. In the meantime, Margaret, was your comment satisfying? I believe I, I've got everyone that had written in, I can see here. Randy, go ahead, please. Randy, your screen is frozen for me. Looks like you dropped off. Okay, questions, discussion, comments? Okay, there we go. Chris, go ahead, please. Maybe a lag in either mine or, or a few others.
Thanks. Everything seems fine to me. Let's see here, I've got a couple, I'll just start with one or two. So one thing that I noticed, I mean, you were talking about how routes are going to, the ideas for routes to be more direct and essentially mostly run through downtown. I am curious, I know some conversations have come up about, I don't know how we want to talk about them, east-west connections across, or north-south, east-west, whatever they are. Sort of across East Wash and areas like that. What's the thinking behind having them all direct, especially when, my understanding is that the feeder buses would not then run on the BRT line? So the thinking behind those direct routes versus crossroads that would connect across and to BRT? Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. Let me just go back to the network map, it's easier to answer that question. The graphic, and one thing that I actually didn't mention, spent a lot of time emphasizing the, the directness of service to downtown. But that is not, not all of the routes in this plan would actually go downtown. There are, basically, the routes are lettered in the current scheme, which isn't necessarily final, but A, B, C, D, E, and F, A through F, are all intended to be routes that go to downtown. And then you have these routes, you have Route G, which starts around East Town and goes to Park and Badger, where the current south transfer point is, via a whole bunch of neighborhoods. You have Route H, which starts at Park and Badger and would be doing something similar on the west side, via the Belt Line frontage, via Raymond Road, et cetera, going to West Town Mall and terminating near Junction Road. And there's also a little P route up here, which is essentially a kind of a continuation of Route G probably most of the time, that would be serving areas that are just a little bit too far from East Wash to be, especially, for that BRT service to be especially useful to them. So there is some thought to having service that is essentially Belt Line service. So we have an east Belt Line, right, on the G, and a west Belt Line on the H. And so we don't want to imply that everyone has to go through downtown to get wherever they're going. But we do know that in terms of how many places there are to go, and how many places you can connect easily with a bus line, downtown provides a solid organizing principle. And so essentially, to the extent people are going downtown, we want to be able to provide a direct ride. But we also designed these Belt Line routes, if you will, to connect a whole bunch of areas where there are significant populations to various places that they need to go. You know, there's West Town over here, there's a bunch of low-income residential in this area. There's retail over here, there's more residential down here. There's a connection to downtown over here, there's Walmart over here, there's low-income residential over here, right? It's all designed to connect through and through, so that people can get to where they're going as directly as possible. You mentioned something about feeder routes to BRT. I think for the most part, this network isn't designed as kind of a feeder network. For the most part, we want to give people a trip that's as direct as possible. There will be instances where people will need to transfer to get from one place to another, because we can't just draw one line from any one place to another and provide any frequency. But we're not trying to force everyone to get to the BRT, we're trying to get people to places directly.
Thanks. That was helpful, just sort of pointing out things I probably could have figured out if I stared at this long enough. Another question I had, I think this will be my last one for now, is, so we all know that the, the chart here is to reconfigure existing resources. But there has been a lot of talk, understandably, about what we would do if we had more resources. And it's not the goal of this. But to folks that are, that are wondering about that, is there a sort of straightforward way about thinking, you know, using this to think about future improvements? Like, for example, would it be within the spirit of this to start with more service on those peak-only routes? Or, you know, some way for folks to think about implications down the road?
Well, I don't want to say that the decision is made either way about what would happen if more funds were available. And I think that's a question that we actually need to ask and want to ask in this next phase of public outreach. Basically, to the extent, to the extent more funding were available, what would be more important? Because you can think of various things, if you're going, if you're, you, if you think that, you know, coverage is important, maybe it wasn't important enough to like cover all these areas right now, but it's still the next number one priority, then yeah, you would look at making those peak-only routes all day. You would look at whether there's areas with, you know, some of the greenfield developments further out that you do want to go to. You would look at places where, you know, that are perhaps even in town, but maybe a half mile from service instead of a quarter mile from service. But on the other hand, you can But on the other hand, you can make just as good of an argument for why there should be more service in the evenings or for why weekend service should be equal to weekday service. So I don't think that we know the answer to that. But I think it's a question that is worth asking if there is a chance to have more funding in the future.
Thanks. That's all for now.
Thank you. Alder Foster, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Maybe just following up on that, that last question comment. I, I think we should absolutely make sure we're doing that as part of this. I know it was, we talked about it as a board prior to issuing the RFP for this. So I think having some sense of where that additional funding would go, obviously always subject to review and change. But I think since we're using this opportunity to get such feedback, I think it'd be really great to do now. And I think also helps. And I've been a little bit surprised by some of the feedback around this that ultimately does come down to, we just need to fund transit more. But, you know, probably most folks involved in this would agree with. But that's really a different question and different feedback than what's the best thing we can do with the current resources. So I think including that in the conversation and allowing for folks to give input around that question would be really useful for a number of reasons. I had just a couple of questions. One of them was, how can you stay, say in any kind of summary form, like how the results you've seen so far with the draft that you've proposed, especially in terms of like changes in access? How does that compare with other cities that you've done this workaround? I mean, it seems to me to be a really high number of, for increase in access for folks. I'm just, I guess, trying to get a sense of, is it, is it extraordinary? Or is this the same kind of experience you see in other cities in the work that you've done?
That's a really hard question to answer, because each city that we work in comes in with, you know, there are a different history and different reasons for why their service is the way it is. I'd say that it's not, big picture, it's at the high end of the spectrum, but not out of, but not out of range. And one of the reasons why, you know, the percentages are so high is that, of course, the absolute numbers are not that high. And that's related to the fact that, you know, with your existing network relying so heavily on routes that run every 30 or 60 minutes, well, how long do you have to wait? A bus that comes every 30 minutes, on average, you'll have to wait 15 minutes for it. Bus that comes every 60, on average, you'll wait every 30. And even if you're really good at timing things, there's a difference, there's a lag in time between when you might have otherwise taken that trip and when you will in fact have to take that trip. So people end up spending often, you know, in many places, more time waiting or as much time waiting as they spend actually getting somewhere. And so as a result, you get very significant improvements in how far people can get to when you turn lines that run every 60 minutes to lines that run every 30 minutes or lines that run every 30 to run lines that run every 10 to 15. So I'd say it's not, it is, it is a relatively high end, but it's not like shocking to me, the numbers that we're getting here.
That's helpful. Thank you. Would you be able to pull up the map that showed the, sort of the dot map around change in access?
Uh, yeah.
Population of the whole. Yeah, I think that's it. So, you know, I think here again, I was struck how, kind of how upside it was in terms of, of improvements versus decrease in access. But it, you know, it looks like there's about five or six kind of locations where we see some clusters of red dots. You know, one of those is in, is in my district. I'm wondering if there'd be an opportunity to do one of the sort of site analyses that were in the appendix for, for those locations in particular. So for, you know, for the kind of the few locations in the city where we expect access to decrease, to get kind of a close in view of what that, what that decrease in access looks like. Is that something that you think would be possible to do?
So there is an appendix to the report that has those maps where it shows what's happening at various locations. If you look at some of these locations, I mean, I, I can explain what's going on in some of them. For example, there, there are some locations where it's kind of incidental, where almost any network change would have caused a negative impact. Like if you live right next to the north transfer point right now, you have bus lines that take you to a bunch of places. Right? And so as a result, almost any change would make it worse. But there are other places where the change in access is related to, you know, what might be a real issue to you if you live there. For example, right here around Region and Speedway, well, right now there is all day service once an hour that goes right here and right here. And we are proposing that right here at Region and Speedway, there would only be service at peak. So in the middle of the day, there would be, you know, you would have to go a lot farther. And so that would be experienced as a loss. If, so there's, it depends, it depends on where you are. But yes, in short, we, we do have an appendix that shows maps of how things change at specific locations. And if there are more specific locations that you want to make sure that they get a look, we can run those and make maps for those specific locations as well.
Yeah, I just probably didn't communicate myself very well. I mean, I did see those appendices. I thought they were super helpful. I appreciate them and was, was basically asking that if we could do, do that analysis, those isochron analysis for, in particular, let's say these kind of the five that jump out at me, maybe there's six of locations. And yeah, like you said, I think maybe probably at least three of them look like basically transfer point locations. So I guess what I'm, yeah, I'm trying to understand is what is that, what does that red actually look like or how does that manifest? So, you know, being able to show, okay, well, maybe there is an overall slight decrease in access. But here's for folks that live in those areas, for example, here's where you can still get in 45 minutes. And here's maybe the areas where you used to be able to, but you, you can't anymore. I think that would be helpful for folks that are, that maybe in those areas in particular.
Oh, yeah, I think we can do that. Sorry if I misunderstood.
No, that's great. And I think my last stroke comment, and maybe this is a little bit further in the discussion, but just thinking about kind of process wise. I mean, definitely looking forward to getting the, the public feedback on this and thinking about, you know, our sort of evaluation of it and reflecting back on my time on the Transportation Commission, which I think is, you know, really the body that has a lot of experience with route changes and sort of a process that, that folks have been used to around that, where we do a, a public hearing, you know, sort of spread the word on with transit riders, you know, across the board, getting that at a meeting, you know, being able to ask questions and then coming back for approval or at the next one. And just, I guess, kind of putting out there for, for ourselves, this is really a question for, for you consultants. But, you know, what do we expect that to look like? And would, I think, I think it'd be really valuable to consider, you know, either having a joint meeting perhaps with the Transportation Commission and, and/or somehow kind of maybe mirroring that process that we've used historically around route changes to make sure we are, you know, we're sort of doing that in addition to the, the public engagement efforts that we're going to be engaged in over the next couple of months. So maybe just putting that out there for, for staff and for the board members to consider. Thank you. Alder Foster, can I also put in a box? Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I have one quick question about if, if we can pull back the map, the ridership map. I have a question about Packer Avenue. And I'm just curious, why the B, the every 10 minute? Yeah, can you go back on the?
Sorry, this map?
Yep, 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 yep. So I can see on a Packer Avenue, B line is running every 10 minute on Packer Avenue. My, as I represent this district and there's a substantial amount of development, low income, you know, housing first, tiny homes on Aberg Avenue. Right now they have access right next to their door from an outside transfer point. I understand we are removing transfer points. So from accessibility point of view, and also regarding people of color and affordability and amount of ridership, the Sherman Avenue have far more density in the projects going forward there. So I'm really curious why this B line is running through Packers Avenue, which is industrial and right now there is no, there's not so much happening. They're not even, even not enough density. So I want to hear the rationale behind it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's a really good question, actually. Packers versus Sherman on the north side. And if you, you called this the ridership map earlier. I just want to clarify that there, this is the draft plan and it's different from the ridership alternative map that existed in the last phase. And in fact, one of the big differences is in that map, the B route was on Sherman. And in this one, it's on Packers.
Yes, I, thanks. I should mean to share, we are targeting the ridership more. That's the intent of your map. I get that.
Yeah. So to answer your question though about the rationale, there was a bit of a struggle. There are competing arguments. And frankly, comments we get about this from the public would be very useful if there's a prevailing sentiment. It would be good to know that. So you're correct. There are more people and at, at least within existing parameters, more destinations along Sherman than right along Packers. Sherman's also a more walkable environment for the most part than Packers. On the other hand, Sherman's very constrained in terms of street infrastructure. And so there are concerns about what, you know, how, how much of a BRT can you actually run? And how reliably can you run service that's every 15 minutes all day and maybe more frequent at peak along it, especially if it's part of a much longer route? Ultimately, I think what swayed us in the direction of Packers in the design of the draft plan was a couple of things. One is that, yeah, right now the access to Packers from residential areas isn't always the best, but there, there is the notion that this plan would be accompanied by some improvements to pedestrian infrastructure and crossings. But also ultimately what swayed us is that if you go via Packers, you can get to a connection to the A route up at North Street. And the amount of travel time from the far north into downtown isn't that different on Packers versus on Sherman. But if you connect at North Street, then you get much easier connection out to the east side, places like Madison College and East Town, et cetera. And so that's kind of where the rationale was in this draft plan. Again, it's not final. And I think that the Sherman versus Packers question is kind of an inevitable one on the north side. And I understand there to be strong feelings on both sides of it. So that's just the rationale that's being expressed here.
Appreciate that. Couple more questions. So one more question is about, as you mentioned, M A T C. Right now, the north side have access to M A T C in this particular BRT, regardless, regardless it goes through Sherman or, or Packer. Everybody have to come towards East Miss and Near East to go again on the east side. So while you were designing this, I'm just curious why the Anderson, you know, road is disconnected from north side directly into M A T C and connecting the A line?
Well, the short answer is that there aren't that many destinations along Anderson Road, like the number of places to go to or the number of jobs per mile, or however you want to express that, right? Isn't, isn't very high. And on Packers, it's higher and it's supposed to get significantly higher in future with the redevelopment projects that are out there. And, you know, to serve a lot of people and as many people as possible directly, it helps to go through places where there are a lot of people and jobs. So ultimately.
Did we lose Daniel?
Yeah, I can't hear him.
Okay, sorry. If I could actually jump in, I can help with this as well. So today is the, the connection between the north side and Madison College, the TruX campus is, is still, you have to take a, a bus that comes every 30 minutes and then transfer throughout 20, which also comes every 30 minutes. And so it's still a transfer away and it's serviced every 30 minutes. The route, Route 20 is actually fairly circuitous. It goes through the airport. The connection between the north side and Madison College will actually be significantly better with this plan, because you're connecting, connecting between two 15-minute routes rather than two 30-minute routes. So the frequency will be higher and the directness will be as direct, if not more direct. The total travel time will be lower, even, even not considering transfers because of the more direct routing. You're not going through the airport loops and so forth. Is Daniel still on or did he get kicked off? Otherwise?
I think he got kicked off. Maybe you could share your presentation, Mike?
Yes, bear with me here.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, so if everybody can see this, we are, this is, this is the same PowerPoint. This is the same one. Get rid of that. So sorry for that interruption, but share if you'd like to, to continue. I can, we can, we can, we can.
So last question, I know there are a couple of hand raised. Don't want to take too much of the time. The one last question is, and Mike, for the commission knowledge, where Alder, Meadsie and myself organized a neighborhood meeting. And there was quite a bit of concerns discussed around workforce route, like Route 17 and connecting north with east side and especially people who go to Woodman's and Aberg Avenue, the affordable free store. So I'm curious, I don't see any solution here. But during the meeting, I, you acknowledged those comments. I'm just curious if, if this is something is totally a dead thing, not going to happen, or this is something, can still start us looking into that?
Sure. So let me, let me dive into that and I can kind of share what we've discussed and what we talked about. So one of the concerns was, was the connection to the, the pick and save here on Aberg, just east of Packers. Our current plan to serve that is by having the B, the future BRT line, Route B here, go off and on the ramps and serve a, a station at Aberg at the new traffic signals. There, that would leave a, a walk of about 1,200 feet or so to the pick and save with a new sidewalk connection. So that's our current thinking is the best way to, to serve that. Although you would, there would be a small, a short, I'm sure it's subjective, but there would be a walk to the, the pick and save. It would be a faster walk than taking route, waiting half an hour for Route 17 and, and making the transfer. But at any rate, and then the connection to the Woodman's here would be at Milwaukee Street. This is another reason that we brought Route B over to Packers Avenue. Is that you can see there's kind of a transfer point at First Street here, where a lot of routes kind of cross over each other. By bringing the B in and connecting it with the A and Route D1 at Milwaukee Street, it takes some of the pressure and, and indirection out of that First Street hub. So people going to Woodman's would be able to transfer at Milwaukee Street to D1. Whereas in the past, they would have transferred at the north transfer point to Route 17. So that's kind of the difference. Like I said, we're still looking at, at, at better ways to optimize transfers and travel between the north side and the east side. We believe we've made some headway, but we're still looking at ways to make that better.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I will speak more during the meantime. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, you call the president of the boss. Alder Meadsie, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'll just have a couple of questions. I'm just wondering, have we thought about any kind of community toolkit? So as we're actually having public engagement, you know, whether it might be at centers or libraries, is there any toolkit that we can, the public can use?
We're working on a public engagement and education process for the implementation of the plan. We're looking at specifically those things, how to, how to get, how to help people understand the new system, how to understand how they took us in the current system versus how they will use it in the future. We're looking at having ambassadors at the transfer points and key places where people can, we can connect with people and let them know how to use their, the, the new system. And, uh, so we're working on a plan. We don't have all the details figured out, but we're working on a implementation plan.
All right. And a couple of other questions. Another one I had is that, uh, was there any kind of, uh, racial analyst, uh, study that was done on who catches a bus, especially even right now? And when was the last one done?
We, we do an online, or we do an onboard survey about every five years. The last one we did was in 2015. So that's getting to be a bit dated, but the, the COVID is, is why we haven't done one in the last couple of years. So we do have some information about, about where people, we, we do ask questions about income, race and so forth. Uh, it's, it's a little bit hard to cross tabulate this, but we've, we've, we've mainly focused on the census demographic data to do our analysis.
Okay. I guess the last comment I have is that, um, given what I've heard from a lot of constituents is that, but the cutting of routes on the north side, that I think this analyst study is really important because, and let me use this as example. And I've said this before, if you have a, uh, route A, B and C, one has a thousand ridership. B has 800, route C has 500. If we continue to take routes away, like we've done on the north side, we lose people riding our transportation system that people are, have, they have cars now. If you go to Kennedy Heights, where most of our marginalized community lives at, they have cars. So it's important to actually, what can we do to revitalize transportation? And if we overlay the map that you have here with a demographic picture of, uh, where the marginalized community is, uh, you can easily see that, um, most of my constituents are going to be walking. And I know you said that people are going to be walking, but for them to walk almost a quarter of a mile or an eighth of a mile, like from Delaware all the way to Northport is almost, uh, a mile. I mean, we're not really thinking about our elderly. We're not thinking about our, our, uh, uh, um, handicap. Um, we gotta definitely, I, I think we could do a lot better than this. Um, I don't know if this, if we can actually have more funding, um, given to the city, given that we're spending $200 million for this B R T, everybody's paying the will tax. I think it's important that we come up with a, a route that covers more of the marginalized community, which we speak of.
Understood. Thank you, Alder Meadsy. Um, are there any more further questions? Did you get your questions answered?
Um, I guess, uh, if anybody wants to chime in on how, how do we, uh, um, I understand that you guys are saying that people are going to be walking, but can you at least, uh, talk about people walking from, say, Delaware to, I know you guys said a fourth or eighth of a mile, but it's almost, um, you know, it's a lo, it's a long walk. So I mean, what do you guys think about that?
So yeah, let me, let me, let me add a few things to the, the conversation here. As we put this, this network together, there are a few places where we try to focus on serving people with low incomes. Uh, and, and so you can see some kind of deviations in the line here. One is the red line, Route B, making this deviation on Troy and school. So that's, that's the, the idea is to serve most of the low income communities along that corridor. So again, we're focusing on, on the low income communities. And then Route B2 here, I think it's B2 is, it goes up to Tennyson and then comes back down. The goal there is to serve some of the senior and low income areas on the north side. The, then we have, this is Route X, which goes up Sherman and then turns west on Wheeler and, and turns around here in Delaware is, is the street just south here where the route currently, Route 1 currently is. Uh, so I think our, our goal in a, in a perfect world would be to have that, that service be all day. Um, so, but most of the, the low, and not all of it, but, but most of the low income areas on this map are served by the red and blue lines. A lot of the areas here are more single family, and so that's why it, it sees, sees, sees a loss in service. Again, though, these, these are not absolute statements. Um, and then the other question you asked about people with longer walks, the, another thing that we'd like to do and are doing is investigating the pedestrian network in a lot of these areas to see if there are connections and better ways that we can improve the pedestrian network to make sure that people who do have to walk to use the service have at least the facilities, the sidewalks and crosswalks and things that, that, that they'll need to get there. Um, I know that doesn't answer all of your questions or doesn't, doesn't get us there. But I'd also just like to say that this is a draft map. And so our, our work for the next couple of months is to see how we can make it, improve it uh, in, in places while, while still trying to hold on to as much of the frequency and direct, directness that the ridership, uh, that the mostly ridership, uh, strategies can, we can, we can get.
And my last question is, uh, is that, uh, we talked about this before, school road, how narrow it is and with our kids walking, crossing the street with a lot of traffic in the morning. Is that really a feasible way to, to come up a school road on that very narrow road with that 60 foot bus?
We are looking at it. It's, uh, I, I, I drove out there a couple of times. It's relatively narrow. It's about 36 wide. It has either ping or pickup drop off on both sides. My feeling is that most of the time it would be fine. Um, you know, school pickup, drop off times, it's, it seems to essentially operate as a one lane road. So there are times that the bus might kind of have to wait. We're looking at that. I do have some concerns. But we'll, we'll, we're going to look at that area in, it specifically as, as well. I, uh, I, I don't know that school road is operable. It's certainly not an optimal environment. We operate on similar streets, but the operations on those streets are suboptimal.
Okay. Cause there's on screen, uh, off-street parking and also too, there's other buses that drop our kids off at school. So we definitely need to think, rethink that our school road, please. Thank you.
Mike, just a note that Dan has joined us. So if you want to, uh, add him to your uh, presentation or answer enough questions, you're welcome to.
Thank you. I saw that. Daniel, do you want the screen sharing back or you comfortable with this?
You should probably keep it. I really apologize. My internet connection's been very unstable and, um, so apologies. My, uh, answer was cut off and thanks for taking it over. I'm happy to add stuff if you would like me to say things, but you should probably keep. Sounds good. Yeah, it's good to have you back. That happens. About it, right? All right. Um, moving on then, um, you, Alder Meadsy, um, Randy, go ahead, please.
Yeah. I apologize as well. My, my internet is unstable and I dropped off for a good five or 10 minutes. Uh, and the question may have been answered earlier, but the north and south B R T. Um, when, when do you plan to implement that?
So there's kind of two parts to that question. One is the service. Well, actually there's three parts. One is the service, one is the buses and two, and three is, is the infrastructure. So the stations and bus lanes and so forth. The service does the route and the frequency and so forth. That will be instituted with this project in summer of 2023. The buses will be in, in 2024 when they come in as part of the east-west B R T project. So in 2024, we'll swap out the 40 foot diesel buses for the 60 foot electric buses. The B R T infrastructure, the bus lane signal priority and stations and so forth. We're looking at, at, at doing that project after the east-west Bus Rapid Transit project. So I think we're looking in the 26, 2026, perhaps 2027 timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add on to that as well, we'd like to get the route more or less with this project. When we do some more in-depth planning for that project, we'll have another opportunity to, to look at some, some adjustments such as the terminals. We need to find a place for the, the charging and, and so forth. But we'd like to basically get the route, you know, at least 99% correct with this project.
All right. Thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney, go ahead, please.
Um, Ben's hand was up. Did Ben get his?
I'm going through board, board members and Alders, uh, first. I'll circle back.
Oh, oh, okay. Thank you. Um, uh, and I apologize for, um, um, joining late. Uh, my question is, there's been a lot of discussion about the route. But what was significant, um, for me is during the presentation, Dan, you mentioned, um, the types of jobs and places of employment, and that was one of your, and frequency of service. That seemed to be one of the drivers that, uh, you mentioned. And, um, I'm just curious, when we look at places of employment and jobs, was there, um, uh, any look at, um, any, uh, wage parity or what those jobs were? Or that wasn't in the scheme of, of what you were preparing? I know it might've been off, but that's a, I'm curious as to what, where, where are these increases, these tremendous increases, um, in employment opportunities? Because it was significant.
So when we were doing the analysis for this project, um, we looked first at kind of where there are jobs in general. Um, and there's kind of two way, there's kind of two concentrations. There's, you know, a very heavy concentration right around the center of town between there and the University of Wash, uh, Wisconsin. Um, and then we also noticed that kind of in a lot of places all along the Belt Line, uh, a little bit more in the west side, but all along it, there are just, um, significant concentrations of jobs. And so we looked at both of those. I don't know that we specifically analyzed the wages that are at jobs, um, at either end. But, um, just based on the land use and the types of places that are out there, um, I can tell you that there are probably a, a higher proportion of low wage jobs in those outlying, um, job destinations than there would be in the center. However, um, you know, the sheer number of jobs in a small area downtown means that there's going to be a significant number of low wage jobs there as well. Does that answer your question?
It gives an answer, but it, it, um, and maybe we can do this offline. It, um, uh, gives me, um, really incentive to look at what are those jobs along those ways? And the reason I bring it up is, is that one of the things that you used in the, in, um, the uh, presentation was the increase in, in jobs and places of employment. And then I have to really look at parity too, because we're, if we're looking at the concentration of, uh, low income, and you mentioned that, of people of color. And I need to really, uh, have a better understanding of what those job opportunities are. Just a, a place in my mind that's, that's still up there. Thank you. And I can talk with you offline about that.
Have to. Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Um, we have, um, Benjamin Lyman here from M P O. Is there any objection to, um, allowing Ben to participate in the discussion, ask questions? Seeing none. Uh, go ahead, Ben. It was just a matter of formality. I wasn't trying to ignore you. Um, go ahead, please.
Totally, totally understand. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I've been, um, working with the design team or the project team on this um, since it started off and just wanted to weigh in and answer a couple of questions that have come up. But I don't know that the people who asked them quite, maybe got the full answer that they, they were looking for. Um, first one, um, Chris, you asked about, um, sort of the funding and where new resources would go. And something that I think is worth mentioning is that the, the pre-pandemic metro network was very peak hour heavy. There were a lot more buses running during the AM and PM peaks than there were during the middle of the day or evenings and weekends. This whole network really smoothes out those resources to serve not just white collar commuters, but people who need to go to the doctor's office or go shopping or go visit family and friends throughout the day. That said, we have reserved, um, I think it's 5% of the, the overall budget to put back into peak service if needed, um, once the buses actually hit the ground on this. So if it turns out that there need to be more frequent service or we have some extra buses on some of these routes, then, then there'll be resources to do that. But if it turns out that we don't go back to that sort of peak heavy, lots of people going to offices downtown at the same time, uh, mode of commuting, those resources are available to turn up the frequency on other things. So we, we did, um, Daniel did mention the possibility of turning up frequency, um, on other routes. Mike mentioned something, ideally we'd have Route X running all day. Um, and so those are things that we have this little pocket of resources. And this next part of the project will help inform maybe where those go if they aren't needed for the peak in the future. Um, the next thing was about the, the school road. And I just wanted to note that, um, City of Madison did submit, um, last Friday, a number seven um, of applications for transportation alternatives funding. One of them is for improved sidewalks and crossings and intersection treatments on School Road, north and south of Northport. So that's something that, that other city staff are already working on. That was identified as the number one priority for those, those funds for the city. So, um, you know, the, the, the right and the hand, left hand are working together on this stuff and working to improve those connections to, to B R T. Um, finally, on jobs data, um, Alder Harrington McKinney, your question. Unfortunately, jobs data is inherently messy. Um, things like UW Health, all the jobs occur in one office building because that's where the address is associated with. And we have to manually move those jobs around on the map to actually have them show where they, where the people go to work. So when you get into not just what industry is a job in, but how much does that particular position pay? It is a very heavy staff, manual labor, um, project to clean up the data enough to be able to tell. And even then, it's not at a very good, very fine geographic level. So it's incredibly difficult to get. Um, it's something that we at the M P O look at a lot or, or try to do our best, but we're still working with 2016 jobs data because it's so onerous to try and update that data set. So it's not something that we can just click a button that, that census.gov and find out where the low wage jobs are. It's, it's a lot more complicated than that, unfortunately. But I know that the, the metro team and the city transportation team are working on it. It just, we, we don't have great data for that. Um, and those are all of my little updates. Thanks for giving me a moment.
Sure. And that was very helpful. Um, Margaret, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, a question about a number that was mentioned early in the presentation. Um, about how this proposal would change the distance, uh, for the, the number that was used gave the median, um, increase. And what I'd like to know is what's the average increase? In walk distance? I mean, how does that, how does it really skew? And if you don't have that number now, I'd, I'd like to see it later.
I can pull that number up. It'll take a couple of minutes.
Okay. While you guys are looking for it, um, question slash comment on this. Uh, the Alder from the north side was talking about, um, service to people with disabilities, service to, um, uh, to the elderly. Uh, perhaps, uh, somebody associated with Metro could talk a little bit about what happens with somebody who, say, uses, uh, you know, uses a mobility device. And their bus stop is now, you know, half mile away rather than a quarter mile away. It's, it's outside the distance to which they can actually use their, the fixed route service, what happens to them.
So a good, good question. The question about paratransit and, uh, people. The question about paratransit and people, people who would qualify for that is, is something that's on our mind. It's important. So right now, as, as most of you probably know, if you're within three quarters of a mile of fixed route service and you're eligible for paratransit, we will, we will evaluate people's applications for paratransit based on, based on the service that we've, we've, we've always done. Now, I think the, the other, the bigger, the big question is where, how does the paratransit boundary get adjusted with this plan? It will be increased in some, in some places. That's clear. For example, east of the interstate here, that's new service that does, that did not exist before. Sun Prairie, we didn't really talk about Sun Prairie, but we're talking with them to try to add fixed route service in Sun Prairie. That would increase our paratransit boundary as well as people on the southwest side along McKee Road. They, that will be new all day service. So that will be increases. There could be some reductions, including you can see a possible donut hole here on the near, nearish, near to mid, I guess, mid, Midwest side. So we'll need to look at that in detail and see what actions need to be taken, if any. The, the three quarter mile rule is a federal minimum. So, you know, we can, we could hypothetically develop our own policy. Yeah, but like I said, if, if they were served by, by transit in the past and were, and it was decided that they were not eligible because they could use a service, but now the service is farther away, you know, they may become eligible.
Yeah. And one clarification on that, like, the current minimum is that service has to be provided within three quarters of a mile of any of the routes when they're running, except for peak hour routes, correct? We don't have to, we don't have to provide that service within three quarters of a mile of, of routes that only run peak hour.
Correct. Yeah. So, so if commuter services exempt, and then if it's all day service, we're required to operate the paratransit when those routes are running. So for example, if it doesn't run on Sunday, then we're not required to, to run it on Sunday. Actually, I just got an email from Tim Saboda. He says, we're not allowed to have donut holes in the, in the, in the, in the paratransit service map. So we wouldn't have donut holes. But there, there still could be some, some potential reductions. But yeah, to answer your question, peak hour only is exempt. All day or regular, well, it's called regular transit service, which operates generally throughout the day. During the times that the regular routes are running, the paratransit service also has to run.
Very happy to hear that note, that news about donut holes because my next question was actually going to be commenting, reinforcing your point about we've been running at ADA minimums and there's nothing other than money that keeps us and political will that keeps us from running a more expansive service for paratransit. So thank you. And did anybody come up with, like, answer the question about?
Yes. To answer your earlier question, so the mean, the mathematical average is 200 feet. And the median, meaning 50% of people lower, 50% of people higher, is 300.
Thank you.
However, they're not, they're not very different. And, you know, that's more or less the resolution of the analysis. So, you know, don't, yeah.
And just to make sure we're as precise as possible on the paratransit rules, we also do not provide paratransit in municipalities that don't contract with us.
Precisely. Yes, because I know.
Just to cross that T.
Thank you. That's all I've got for the moment.
All right. Thank you. Alder Miyazi, go ahead, please.
Yeah, just a quick piggyback on what somebody said about two things. Well, one was funding. So long ago that I almost got that question. But basically, I wanted to say that, you know, everybody knows on the north side, you know, it takes an hour and a half just to get downtown sometimes. So the transit system on the north side is really terrible. And I think as a, as a, as we talk about BRT, how much we're spending for it. And as we talk about, like I said, the will tax that people are paying, we need to think outside the box. I know, Mike, you talked about starting off from scratch and at, at one of our meetings. And I think this is something we knew really, when we talk about ridership, we need to really think about probably adding funding to revitalize transportation, especially in, on the north side. And I would love to actually set up a meeting with Mendola School and traffic. Because I've already heard from them that a school road should not be an option. So I would love to sit down and talk about the sidewalks that you guys talked about and see how that weighs in. And so, yeah, just those two things, while we're thinking about ridership, let's really think about how do we revitalize a place that has been lost and has been, the transportation system has been terrible on the north side. Thank you.
Yeah, just to respond to that, we're, we're looking at School Road again. So we'd be happy to set that meeting up with you when we have a little bit more information about alternatives and things like that. One other thing to mention is that this plan and probably many, many alternatives to it would require a new traffic signal at Northport and School, which does not exist today. Even if the bus doesn't make the northbound left, if we just had stops there, we would require a way to cross the street. Right now, we get around that problem by doing the loop. So just, just to mention that. But yeah, we'll, 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 we'll continue to work on this.
All right. Thank you. Are there any further comments, questions or discussion on the network redesign draft plan? Alder Foster, go ahead. Oh, what if you, Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just, just a real general comment and words of appreciation. I mean, this is, there's been a lot of work that's gone into this. I remember working on, you know, this as a budget amendment in 2019 to get this work going, thinking how critical it was going to be. And just seeing where we're at right now, it's super exciting. I feel like the process has been really, really great so far. Definitely looking forward to hearing additional feedback, maybe some, you know, refinements. But, you know, from everything that I'm seeing so far, it looks like it's really on track with what we've been trying to do. And just really excited to, to keep it moving forward. So mostly just words of thanks to those that have been working on it.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Go ahead, please.
Thanks. Yeah, similar kudos. I think it's been great to see working through some of these problems that are coming up. And also thinking about getting ahead of ways of communicating the changes and everything. I was going to offer just a couple ideas in terms of communicating more further down the road. One is, there was a lot of talk tonight about how easy it would be to get to MATC or certain job locations and things like that. And I think the maps and even, the maps definitely, and some of the other tools we've got here, don't really do that justice because these are different ways of thinking about questions like that than people are used to. So if there are ways of getting, laying out the picture more in terms of how people think about, you know, like, how long would it take me to get to MATC compared to what it did before if I am here? You know, in, almost like you would do on your phone or something? And create some of those stories, that might be helpful. And then this one's a little trickier. I, I'm, I'm really impressed with how, how we have seen such large increases in so many places compared to where we've had to pull back some service. Obviously, those service losses are a big deal. But really, we're, we're shifting things so, so, so large towards benefiting a lot more people, a lot more. So I'm just wondering, and, and this is up for folks on the team to decide if this is helpful in communicating. The, the dot maps that are showing, you know, where we're losing and gaining service. I wonder if it would be helpful to just sort of translate that into numbers. Really know how many folks are, are losing service and by how much compared to how many folks are gaining service? And I think you talked in those terms at one point, at least about walking distances. But I think getting some of those numbers in terms of accessibility could be really helpful. Thanks again.
If, if I could just respond to a couple of points there. So I'm going to try to go from memory. But one of the things that it would be nice to do, which would be an, an online trip planner so that you could put two points in and say, how do I get there in the future? That's difficult because you basically have to schedule all of the service. None of this is scheduled. It's just, it's just frequency based. And can you remind me what your second major point was? I'm sorry.
Just turning some of the, like the dot, turning the dot map into numbers.
Yeah. So we did a quick analysis where I, I counted up the, the pre-COVID boarding numbers. And like I think Daniel mentioned, we found that about 95% of people that boarded, 95% of the boardings that happened in the, in the older system would be, would, would still have comparable walk in the newer system. About 4% of the people would be, would have a situation where their bus stop closed and the replacement bus stop would not be just like a block away or something. And then about another half of a percent or so would be in the situation where they used to have a peak hour only bus. And, and that would no longer be available. It would be more than a block or so away. So it's about, about 5%. It seems to be scattered about, you know, more or less even throughout the city. And then, you know, the other part of that, that question is that, you know, a lot of this, this new service on east of the interstate and in the southwest side, you know, those are new people that we don't know what the boardings will be at those bus stops that will now have service that didn't. So that, those are, that's sort of an unknown number. And then the other thing that we're, we'd hope to try to do is, is some kind of example trips of how you did it before and versus how you did it, did it, how you will in the future. So people can kind of understand it.
That'd be awesome. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Bodri, go ahead, please.
Yeah. So I, I was just trying to keep my comments to the end. I just wanted to give a big kudos to the staff and also Dan's team, Dan and team. There's a lot of data points to go through and a lot of things to go through here. And really appreciate you guys going through and I of all of the plans we saw, the, from alternatives to the current draft, it's keep improving. So that's really good direction going and really, kind of like, I like this plan, that draft plan. And I hope more feedback will come from the community. And we'll probably have a final plan eventually. So kudos to the team. And just only one concern of, of all of this, when I had was the, the coverage area was we are increasing more walking distance with this plan. That was the only thing. And it's, yes, no, with the same funding, we cannot achieve everything. So somewhere we had to go on it. But unfortunately, we live in a place where the below zero degrees are already more number of days than any other cities that you, we actually look at. And sub-zero temperatures, people walking more distance to the bus stops is the only concern I'll have. Like in summertime, we will have like ozone days, right? Ozone alert days where you have free bus ride. But I was thinking more like winter times, maybe we'll have a, a different coverage for winter times where there's more coverage in that winter freezing temperature days. Hopefully that's something to think about in future. Other than that, everything looks good. I just wanted to give kudos to the team and look forward.
Yeah, thanks.
Do more discussions. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks for that. I appreciate it. One thing is, is that the, we've, we've done a little bit of the seasonal service, not so much in, in routes that only exist in the winter. But we typically have much higher passenger loads in the winter and, and particularly during the school season. So if you looked in the ride guide in the past, you'd see trips that says this, this trip only operates between, you know, was it September and, and June or something like that, September and May? And then, yeah, that, that, thanks for your kudos.
Can I add a thing? And perhaps this was said while I was offline. But I don't want to say that the, you know, the project team doesn't take a position on whether the budget is correct, whether the budget is morally right. We're saying, we, we understand this to be the budget that's available. And within that budget, we understand that we are trying to meet certain goals. And based on the process so far, we've landed here. So I do think that, yeah, there's good reasons to think this happens in a lot of places that we work where once people see what the trade offs are, and they are relatively painful, and you are asking people to walk distances that are going to be difficult for some people. Sometimes that does move forward a conversation about funding. And perhaps it will in Madison as well. But just to make that clear, that we are not taking service, making service farther away from people because we take any pleasure in it or because we take a position for it. It's because we are trying to, you know, meet certain goals which are of increasing the usefulness of the system as much as possible according to the direction that's been provided.
Just, just one more thing. One more thing. I'm, I'm sorry. We, we don't, we, we no longer offer free rides on ozone alert days. We stopped doing that a few years ago.
Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that one. It's just thought about that when sub-zero days, that's a kind of public safety, right? So the public safety takes over of priority wise should be the top priority than anything else that we have, whether it's fundings or anything. So that's why I thought sub-zero days, I would think that public safety issue that day, right? So just, that's why I brought that one up. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Council President Abbas, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. So first of all, thank you very much for all of your service as the volunteer on a committee and giving council a policy direction. And also to City of Madison, this is a historic moment. It's going to be impacted either way, positive or negative for, for coming back. So I really appreciate you guys are looking into that and providing feedback. Couple of things I would like to add here. Another one is I, I agree with Commissioner Chris McHale, if I'm not pronouncing wrong. We also, Metro staff came to NRT and we had a detailed discussion about some of north side route reduction and some of other concerns. When we have the discussion, one of the NRT recommendation was perhaps that after the discussion was, we should look into providing a data, but like we have those doubts, but we need to really provide like metro route comparison, like these routes, 22, 23, 17, they're all be gone, replaced by this, this amount of number of walk or miles people have to do from this bus stop. So those analyses in the easy terminology would be extremely beneficial for the community to understand. So that's, that's number one. And I appreciate if Metro can do that because they already have the data. The second thing is, I also agree with Commissioner Botherinot. Part of, again, I'm, I represent part of North District. So I will speak to my constituent. There are quite a bit of area which is because of this new draft plan, it's gonna, it's gonna increase substantial amount of walk, especially for disabled community and low income community. Regardless of cold weather and rainy day and hot weather, this is gonna be, there is a real impact. And that's also something we should look into that. Third thing is, I understand when we look into D2, which is every 30 minute and B, I strong, yes, thank you very much. I strongly think 2026, God, I want to be optimistic, but God knows what is the situation with council budget and city budget. I don't know north side BRT when it's going to happen. I want to remain optimistic. I do think so. Just for sake of argument, Route 26 BRT is going to run Sherman East Side for BRT route or for bus stop. That is very short sighted. There is a huge population, affordable housing, natural, offering affordable housing on a Brentwood village. I can name many apartments there which need a better service. And right now it's 30 minute. With this plan, it still remains 30 minute. I know they're putting X for some, you know, sometime they will run. But over weekend, people want to have same struggle. I don't see any improvement. I'm just being super blunt with, with all the commission member. Packer revenue doesn't make sense to me as an order. It's all commercial corridor. There's no housing. Packer Avenue doesn't make sense to me as an order. It's all commercial corridor. There's no housing accommodation. So I will highly suggest the council look for the lens of equity here and see how resident special low income family can be served on Sherman. Let's say in twenty-six, when we're gonna run BRT, then we could, you know, we could come back to Packer Avenue when we have those funds. We could always shift that back or look into at that point. And then just the last comment is about route number seventeen, which is totally gone. And Metro's effort, yes, thank you very much right there. Yep. And Metro effort to put a connection with the the second grocery store on Northside, which is first is Really Street, first is Pick and Save, then it's Really Street and Pick and Save. It's affordable grocery store for some of folks, if not all. So Metro argument about putting a bus stop there. I know you guys have more experience than me. My experience with DOT, Department of Transportation and highway structure, because we have a thirty Packer Avenue Highway both going through there. It's gonna be uphill battle. I am not optimistic. They're gonna get permission, how they're gonna put the bus stop, how that logistic gonna work. And if Metro feels positive, I think so one recommendation could be there should be some budget allocation for public works and whoever agency does that at engineering and get their evaluation. We should not just on the basis of a comment from the Metro like, hey, this is gonna happen. This is our vision. I know that they are doing in a good faith, but I'm I'm still not very optimistic. This is practically possible to put a stop there. Unless we get further studies. So just approving over Packers Avenue, I still as a orders feel extremely concerned. And I do think so it should go where people live, which is Sherman Avenue. That's pretty much from my side. Thank you very much.
Good. Alder Abbas, I'll just make one clarification to answer your question is that there is money, operational money in Metro's budget to implement some of the capital improvements that you just mentioned. So they don't have to be requested because I I believe it's about ten million dollars to just to make capital improvements that you were questioning whether or not there's funds available for. So that's just a clarification.
All right. I appreciate that. And so if those funds are available, I think so if we are approving those, I just want to make sure that happen. Thanks.
Daniel, if you want to, Ben. Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing. I don't know if this fully satisfies what you're looking for, but within the report, there are pages that actually compare in a more detailed way the existing service and what's in the draft plan. And I believe the north side is specifically on page twenty-nine. And you can, it's sort of there's there's a map on the left and a map on the right, and then the center, there's kind of an explanation of how the service is different. And I'm not able to share that right now. So.
You want to?
Sure. Thank you. So you see this? So we have a page like this. Basically, we have one for every part of town. This is specifically an explanation of what's happening on the north side. It's the east side, south side, southwest, northwest. So just so you know, that's a thing that exists.
No, I appreciate that, Daniel. If you can go back on the north side, you don't need to go back. Just that's all right. I have a reference. The thing which I was really curious to know is about by changing those routes and and especially putting the bus stops, the traveling time from each place, how much it's gonna be longer or how much it's gonna be shorter. That's the analysis I'm looking for for my constituents so they can understand. Like people who connect through Route seventeen behind the Eken Park, let's say they connect through there, they walk to Pick and Save and get grocery connect from there. If that is totally gone, now they have to walk all the way towards either Commercial Avenue, where Tiptop Avenue is, or either they have to walk all the way on East Washington. So those walkability analyses, how much they're gonna impact. Of course, there are advantage of timing. And we can also express that, like, hey, the time is better. So so those are the things which I was looking for the Metro or NRT was looking. But I appreciate you are sharing that page number as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alder Miyazi, go ahead, please.
All right. Last comment. I just want to thank city staff for all that you guys have done. I know this is a very convoluted issue, you know, and so it's not, it's not been a walk in the park. But it's just to me on the north side, you know, knowing that this problem existed for for many of years, right? And, you know, when we talk about, you know, just even a racial analysis study, if we don't have one of those, how can we properly say, you know, even dictate about ridership because we don't know who exactly, you know, is on the bus, who's catching the bus. So I think it's imperative that, I don't know if that's still in your purview to do one recently. You said it's been a couple of years, but two thousand fifteen to now, that's about six years. And I think, you know, one of the classes I took as a project manager, I think that that should be something that definitely I know with COVID and all that that we didn't get a chance to do, but I think as we're trying to get this done, that's something that's definitely something that we should definitely look at. Like I said, transportation is so poorly on the north side that that people has probably stopped catching the bus over here. So that kind of racial analysis study, I think it's imperative that, you know, if we can, if we can get that done, that would be nice.
Yeah, we, like I said, we were planning on doing an update and we still are. I don't know what the exact timing is. We typically, the MPO helps us with that. I don't know if Ben, you know the the timing on that.
Uh, we're supposed to be working on, it's like Justin just popped up as well. We're working on getting the survey instrument together this summer. I've actually already started on on kind of noting on what we want to change from the twenty-fifteen survey. You know, it's best if we can keep a lot of the questions the same so we can track things over time, but there are some things we didn't ask in twenty-fifteen that are really important. We want to get at this time. So we're looking at, I think, getting that out this next winter. I think starting the survey in the winter and then through the through the winter and the spring of twenty-three. I will also say that there was a twenty-eighteen Title VI survey that Metro conducted. So not the normal onboard survey of where are you coming from, where are you going to, who are you, how many transfers did it take, do you feel safe on the bus? All of those things that are normally done in the onboard survey, but really a strictly who are you, what is your race, gender, ethnicity? That survey was done in twenty-eighteen, so that was more recent than the the twenty-fifteen number that Mike threw out earlier. But yeah, we are working on that and Tom and Justin have asked the MPO to assist once again on that. So we'll be taking it on.
Oh, yeah. If you could send me that two thousand eighteen, I would love to see that. And like again, I said, thank you so much. I know this is a very convoluted issue, especially being on the north side. So I really appreciate all the work that you guys have done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ben, I see your hand up. Do you have any more further comments?
No, I'm just taking notes rather than clicking buttons. Sorry.
Right. Well, thank you and thank you for your contribution. All right. Another call for questions, comments, discussion. All right. Yeah. So thanks again to staff, board members, our consultants, alders who've been reaching out to their constituents, everyone else who maybe I haven't mentioned. All the work is appreciated and it continues. If there's no further questions, comments or discussion, I guess I would like to get a motion to approve the redesigned draft plan and give the approval to kind of move on to the next phase of public engagement. Alder, Alder Furman.
I'd like to make that motion to approve the draft for public engagement.
Yeah, is there a second? Uh, looks like Randy got there first. Randy, second. Need further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Metro Transit redesign draft plan and approving the next phase of public engagement, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Propose no? Margaret, have you? Okay. Surely it's unanimous. If you like register a no vote, please raise your hand. All right, that'll go on. It's unanimous. Thank you. Margaret, go ahead, please.
Yeah, sorry about that. Wasn't quick enough with my two computers going back and forth. Just a question for staff or, and it doesn't have to be answered now, but it I'd like to see what the plan is for public engagement. We've had some difficulties with that, obviously, with with COVID. So, you know, knowing who, where the outreach is going to be happening and when would be helpful.
Let me just touch on that quickly. So we are trying to plan the first full city public meeting, which will be virtual. All of this will be virtual, given the the news of, you know, how how COVID has been going. We're trying to plan that for the week of somewhere around the week of February twentieth, early twenties. We have not settled on a date, but generally looking at that, that general general timeframe, we will then do, I'm going to say maybe six to eight regional meetings so that we can focus on places like the north side, the east side, the south side, the far west side, the near south side, or the the near west side, the Kansas and so forth. And then we will also be doing our focus groups and trying to reach out to people so that we can, we can get a representative sample of of input. And one of the chief tools that we'll be using for that is a new online survey. The idea being we want to give people a low effort way to engage with us, ask questions, try to understand what's going on. So that's our general strategy. Melissa, if you're on the line, if there's anything I missed, chime in.
No, that's great. You've covered it, Mike. One thing is that, you know, we're gonna need help coordinating those meetings and I'm hoping to work with alders from those various areas of town, particularly north side, south side. But I think, you know, having sponsors for those those virtual meetings will make them be more accessible and more helpful. So we will be reaching out to you over the next week or so to make that happen.
Okay, Alder, Alder Carter, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I will be reaching out to Urban Assets to sponsor meetings in South Madison. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Okay. We're moving on into, let's just our six nine five zero two transportation annual operating report. Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I I think I'd like to refer all this to our next meeting. That's all right.
So there's a motion. Thank you, Alder Foster. Is there a second? Alder Furman, second discussion. Alder Foster, do you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, we talked about this in our agenda setting and put it on here in case there was time, but I think we've got a good good, good meeting and there's nothing super urgent about it. So it looks like Director Lynch is on board, but just push it to our next meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of referring this item to our next meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Propose no? Surely it's unanimous. If you like register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will go on as unanimous. Thank you. That's all we have for the evening. Thank you for the excellent discussion on the Metro redesign item, everyone. It was really appreciated, I think, by all. Looking for motions to adjourn. Second motion by Bodri, is there a second? Second by Randy. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting for this evening, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Aye. No. It's unanimous. We're adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Night.